Please.
Commissioner Fredericks?
You're.
McCaffrey?
Yeah, here.
Connect?
Here.
Hammond? Kenny?
Present.
White House?
Here.
Starter?
Here.
Any additions or deletions from the agenda?
No, sir.
Okay, public forum for non-agenda items for tonight. So that does not, anything that's outside of the public hearing for the zone change request or the site plan, anything else? Anybody? Okay, consideration of minutes from the March meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from March?
I move we approve the minutes from March.
I'll second that. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Fredericks?
I was saying.
McCaffrey?
Yes.
Connect?
Yes.
Hammond? Kenny?
Yes.
White House?
Yes.
Starter?
Yes. All right, number six, new business. It's the public hearing for the zone change request.
Point of information, are we going to go over conflict of interest or ex parte communications?
I was, is that me or do you, would you like to take it?
No, staff will do that. But thank you for the reminder, Commissioner White House. As Chairman Sarter was, was beginning to introduce the next item, it is a rezone of a property at Sixth and Svetta. The rezone request is to change the zoning designation from C1 community commercial to C3 highway commercial. I'd like to go over from a staff standpoint, and for those of you on the Zoom call, this is Cody Byrd, Planning Director, speaking. Procedurally, I'd like to go over the public hearing procedures, just as a refresher and reminder for us. And then after I explain the procedures, I would like to offer an opportunity for disclosure of any conflicts of interest and ex parte communications. But I'd like to start with just a high level overview. In a public hearing process, we do have a procedure that the planning commission follows. We'll begin with disclosure of, disclosure of any conflicts of interest and any ex parte communications or communications and information received outside of this meeting. I'll do an introduction to the, the staff report and the item and the request. After a staff introduction, we'll turn it over to the applicant for an opportunity to share any additional information that the applicant would like to share. And then if you have any high level questions for clarification regarding the presentation, you'll have an opportunity to ask those. But then we're going to have an opportunity for the public hearing. This is an opportunity for the, the public residents to, to speak on this particular item. And following the, the close of the public hearing, then we'll have an opportunity for the applicant to respond to any of those public comments. Staff will take an opportunity to make any closing comments on, on the public hearing. And then we'll turn it over to the planning commissioners for deliberations and then a motion and vote. So that's the, the procedure. I did print out that kind of step by step bullet point, and it's at the table in front of you so you can track where we're at and where we're at in the process. So that's the, the procedure. Are there any questions on, on that explanation? Okay, thank you. So next, I'd like to give just a, a brief introduction on the, the application. So for, well, I'm sorry, why don't we do before, as I said, we would do conflicts of interest and ex parte before my presentation. So conflicts of interest would be anything that's, that you have a direct conflict regarding the application, the applicant or the request. If you're receiving money as a result of the, of a change in this approval, or if approving this influences your decision because you're financially tied or spouses financially tied to the request or the property, that would be a potential conflict of interest. So, and if you have any questions, feel free to holler at me. We do have our town's legal counsel here tonight who, as well, who can help with any clarifications. But if you feel like you do have a conflict of interest that would make it difficult for you to pass a fair decision on this application, then now would be the time to, to state that and possibly recuse yourself from, from this agenda item. A little long-winded, but are there any conflicts or any questions on conflicts?
No questions, no conflict here.
Okay, thank you. So the next step is disclosure of ex parte communications. As I mentioned before, ex parte communications are, are communications or information that's received outside of this public meeting setting. In a quasi judicial proceeding, like a rezone case, you're presented information to you at the meeting tonight. So anything that, any information that you obtained through speaking with residents, speaking with a property owner, speaking with an applicant, research you did on your own, those are, those are the types of things that if it sheds light onto some aspect of this application, and that's information that you have. This is an opportunity for you to share that information so that all of your commissioners have the same information when they're considering making their decisions. So any questions on ex parte? Do we have any ex parte communications to disclose?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. We've covered two very important procedural steps. So next I will proceed with the staff presentation. And let me see if I can get this here for a screen share. Give it a second. I know there's a little bit of a lag in the room. There it is. So wanted to just begin real quick. This is a location map that's in your agenda packet. As you can see here, the property highlighted in yellow is at the inner, the intersection of Jefferson Avenue and Sixth Street. It's, it's two parcels under the same ownership. It's approximately 1.29 acres in size. There, there are two parcels involved with this request, but they're same ownership and same application. So they're being considered as one development parcel. The, see the property again, going to scroll down here to the zoning map is currently zoned C1 community commercial, which is this reddish color. And as you can see on the zoning map, you can see the, the adjacent properties in the surrounding area and what their zoning are. To the, to the north is additional C1 property. There are a number of parcels in here that have been granted conditional use approvals to construct attached single family townhomes. There's the chiropractic and office and pharmacy with residential lofts just to the west of the property. South of the property is Zone C3 Highway Commercial. That includes the Ridley's Grocery Store. Dollar General was recently approved here. And of course you have your, your highway and then your C3 zoning is further north along Sixth Street closer to the intersection. So this is, this maps also in your agenda packet, but I wanted to specifically orient you to that because that's one of the factors that's considered in the rezone. So now you know where the property is at and you know what the surrounding zoning is. When the planning commission considers a rezone request, you're making a recommendation to the Board of Trustees. The, what, what we're going to be doing as a staff tonight is taking notes based on what the planning commission gives us as feedback. You're going to go through, which were highlighted in the staff report, 10 findings of fact. Your role as a planning commissioner is to evaluate each of those findings of fact and state which of those are relevant and important in your overall recommendation that will be forwarded on to the Board of Trustees. So staff will be taking notes based on what you tell us for each of those findings, and then we'll put together a summary that goes to the Board of Trustees. What you have in your packet is each of those findings is broken down with staff's recommendations of what we thought were relevant findings for each of those criteria. The planning commission can add to, or say, you know, staff, we don't feel that that, that bullet point was important. You can adopt the staff recommendations. You can modify those in any way you see fit. But we just wanted to give you a good starting point based on staff's opinion for each of those factors. And the last factor is number 10 is, is your professional staff's recommendation and opinion on the overall application. So we can go through those one by one or address them collectively. I've done it both ways, both, both work. You could tell me what you'd like to do from a staff standpoint. And then at the close of the staff report, we've included three motions. One is to approve the request. One is to forward, or forward a recommendation to the board to, to approve the request. One is to forward a recommendation to maintain the existing C1 zoning. And then the third is always an option. If there's significant public comments that warrants more time or more information is needed, planning commission always has the option of tabling the item to a later date. Usually we do ask to make sure that the applicant is comfortable with any continuations, but they are on the call tonight and would be able to, to speak to that. So I've oriented you with the site and I've oriented you with the, the staff report and the findings. At this point, I think it would be good to give the applicant an opportunity to share anything that they would like to as part of a presentation. And then for the board, I'm, as I mentioned, I'm very happy to go through the findings one by one if you prefer, or if you just want to take the lead on how you'd like to go through that and those recommendations. This commission hasn't done a rezone hearing for a while, so it's not probably fresh in everyone's mind. I am open to going through that procedure however you see is best fit.
Well, yeah, let's go ahead and give it the applicant a chance to kind of rebut, and then we'll take it from there and see what kind of questions arise from the conversation.
We are going to, I'm going to stop sharing just for a moment. And look at our attendees. We have Chris Hawkins, who's representing the applicant. And we also have a call in phone number. I don't know who that person is, if they're the applicant or not. Okay, perfect. Okay, they're getting switched over to presenters. So Chris and Trevor, when you have an opportunity, if you could do like a mic test and we can see Trevor's picture, we can see Chris now. If you want to do a mic test to make sure that we can hear you, that'd be great. Thanks.
Sure. Hi, Chris Hawkins with Outplain Planning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, we can, Chris. Thanks.
Great, thank you and good evening. Appreciate the opportunity to present our rezoning application to you this evening. I think everyone's familiar with the property, so I'm not going to dwell on that. One thing I did want to point out on this zoning map, it's very indicative of why we're seeking the zone change. If you look at the, what I call the four corners of the intersection of Sixth Avenue and, well, really Jefferson Avenue and I-25. They all have this C3 zoning, if you look at it, and we're simply asking for that same level of zoning on this important commercial corridor right here. It's really common on these types of intersections to have commercial uses, and we just want a little bit different commercial uses than allowed under the base C1 zoning. And if you look at this, it really is just trying to have the same zoning as surrounding properties. And all four corners abut residential development, and so we really think it's being treated a little unequally by the town. If you look at the surrounding land uses, it's common to have intensive commercial highway oriented development as allowed under the C3 zone that then abuts residential areas, some of it directly and some with intervening right of ways. And, you know, we're just seeking to allow for a wide array of commercial uses. And so what are the added C3 uses? Bed and breakfast, car washes, fuel sales, either with the retail center or freestanding, equipment rental establishment, food catering, funeral home, health and membership clubs, limited indoor recreation facilities, hotel or motel lodging establishments, motor vehicle service and repair, plant nurseries and greenhouses and print shops. That's not a huge amount of more intensive uses than are allowed under the current C1 zoning. If you look at that, it really, and you compare it to current uses, a lot of these you'll see have generate more traffic than the lodging uses such as fast food or drive-through restaurants and certain professional offices have quite a bit of trips. But I think knowing that each of these lots or that lot could have at least one or two fast food restaurants at it today, generating a lot of traffic and knowing that they'd have to access that site or sites individually or collectively using the town's standards, we're not really seeing this as any additional traffic impacts over the, basically the C1 zoning. Access is desired from either Sixth Street or Jefferson Avenue. We understand there's some design parameters we'll have to work through with the civil engineer, and I looked at some of those standards today. If access is off Svetta Lane, that's a really low volume road right now to a commercial area with about 12 to 20 multifamily townhouse residences. So it's really an underutilized road. If you look at that 20 multifamily units max and say it was 10 ADT, that's 200 average daily trips. That's nothing in the big scheme of access on roadways and zoning. The other road coming off of Jefferson Avenue provides a primary access. Several of those uses, we've already talked about generate more traffic, so we don't think there's any additional traffic lane. And, you know, if access is from Svetta Lane, again, you know, there's this, you know, home, eventually this will be redeveloped to either it's allowed uses under C1 or if they get rezoned someday, but very limited access. This street is a primary access up here that for most of this townhouse cluster, and then you might have about 12 to 16 units that utilize Svetta Lane for this. So in looking at this, this commercial development may be forced to come off Svetta Lane too. And that would make sense to have a commercial access teed up across from here to come across in this intersection. And this is one thing I wanted to point out too on this map is you've got here the three corners that already have the C1, C3 zoning, and we're just seeking the same as along the highway corridor. And there are, are other all smaller lots that have this C3 zoning on this side of the highway, or sorry, this side of Sixth Street, the east side of Sixth Street. And we're just seeking the same, and it's common to have residential development directly abutting those types of developments. It's nothing different than you see here, 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 here. And some of it's fairly intensive residential development when you look at it. And you can see that from the aerial view showing the most recent development with single family homes behind C3. And again, this is Zone C3, at least I'm not sure if the PUD dictates something else for that, but this is residential use. And then you've got all this Zone C3 and intensive single family residential development up here. So if it does just come down to access, again, our preference would be to create a deceleration lane here and then have a turn in. If we have to seek a variance to a shorter deceleration lane, we're more than willing to do that and to improve the road out here as needed. We understand some utilities might have to get relocated. But if you look at compatibility and even diminution of value, clearly, commercial development has not diminished the value of residential development around in the area. And I think the assertion of the staff memo that that would occur here should be questioned a little bit. So as far as the frontage road, you know, that speaks for itself. It was intended for existing and planned commercial uses. Jefferson Avenue, we understand that it'd be problematic to access off of that, but that's 45 feet of width. Ideally, we're coming off of Sixth Street, which again is a very big right of way with plenty of room to make all the needed improvements as well. We also will make those, any improvements we need included sidewalks and things like that. We already talked about the trip generation and how several create more trip generation than others that are currently allowed under C1 zoning, such as fast food restaurant. And again, we think it, in the end, the uses will be dictated through the site plan development process because I don't think you're going to see a hotel or motel here because there's probably not enough land area. But in the end, it could be fast food restaurants in the future or other uses in there, and you could have a lot of trips under the current zoning or those other uses I went through earlier, some of which don't have as many trips like a funeral home. So again, there's a pretty minor difference between C3 zoning and C1 zoning. If you look at it, I mean, what's the difference between a gas station and a fast food restaurant in terms of intensity and activity? Again, we're not diminishing in that. We're not changing that character that could already be there today. Again, it's going to have the same level of impacts. Zoning tools will mitigate the impacts of commercial development with very limited uses allowed under the C3 zoning. This is out of your current code. I don't have the, you know, new code, but I'm guessing it's somewhat the same. The only difference in dimensional standards, it's the same FAR, it's the same setbacks. It's going to be the same landscape buffering, the same site design requirements as other commercial uses. The only difference is the 45 foot height. And we can easily through a replat or plating process establish a plat note that keeps the height at 35 feet or less if there's a concern on the added height. It wasn't about the height, it's more about the use. So in terms of the tools, we're going to provide landscaping buffers, open space, quality site design, fencing, sidewalks, dark skylighting and other required improvements will be needed. We'll have to engage a traffic engineer to design the access with their civil engineer to make sure it meets town standards. Again, as of the writing of the memo, there weren't any negative public comments on the proposed rezoning. That's pretty rare in my world where I deal with rezonings. So I think that's a very positive statement. We really hope you agree on the rezoning with this and look forward to having a bit of a discussion, hopefully with you on this and would like to rebut any public comments that do come up. Trevor, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I would just, I, my name is Trevor McGarvey. I represent Sixth Street well, who is the contract purchaser. We would just ask the commission to basically treat us in the same manner that they have treated the properties abutting. This property, I know that many of those are already zoned C3, as Mr. Hawkins told the committee, or we don't plan on the change in zoning, increasing the amount of traffic that's going to go through the property. There hasn't been any negative public comment, which as he says, somewhat rare and finally, we just asked the community to give us a, a fair shake here. In terms of the development of the property, it's been vacant for some time, which I don't think increases property values. And we would be happy to work with the town in terms of conditions or whatever you guys might need as the property gets developed. So we're just seeking to enhance a few additional uses through this, through the C3 zoning and would be happy to work with the town in agreeing to conditions or whatever may help ameliorate any of the problems or the issues that the, the staff noted in their findings. So based on that and mostly based on Mr. Hawkins' presentation, we would ask you to approve the change in zoning to C3.
All right, both of you, thank you so much for your presentation. I guess we'll bring it to the planning commission for the moment and see if there are any questions on anything either Cody or the applicants have stated so far. You guys have anything? Guys and girls?
I'd love to be walk through all 10 of the, the findings for each factor. That's fine.
From town staff's perspective? Yeah, absolutely. I agree.
Happy to do that. I, Mr. Chairman, could I make one statement real quick just to respond to Mr. Hawkins' presentation? I, I think you, it might have been misinterpreted or misstated just a little bit in that the presentation was stated in term, as I understood it, and Mr. Hawkins, correct me if I, if I misunderstood, but it seemed like the, the impression was being presented that the existing C1 zoning allows fast food restaurants with drive-throughs and fuel sales, and that's not the case. The C1 zone is currently written specifically excludes drive-through restaurants and fuel sales. So that might have been just misread or it's kind of buried in the, in the back of the text, but that's a very clear distinction between the C1 and the C3. And I just wanted to make sure that that was made part of the record.
Thank you, Mr. Byrd. If you'd like to run through all of your findings, I think we would.
Sure, I'd be happy to do that. What I will recommend, and this was a six or seven page staff report, so I, I would suggest maybe not going through every single bullet point, but rather focusing on the findings. And perhaps if I could suggest, maybe go through the planning commission's findings on each of those. You tell, tell staff which, and the applicants and others, which of those. Actually, you know what? Let me, I would suggest that the planning commission go through each of those findings as part of your deliberations and state your, your findings that will become part of the record. But at this point, I don't want to, I don't want to jump past the public hearing portion with discussion. So maybe let's, we'll keep it focused on what the finding is and, and a high level overview of what staff's considerations were. So the first finding was the character of the neighborhood. This is generally just a factual description of, of what's existing. As I mentioned before, it's a 1.29 acre property. It is located along Jefferson and Sixth Street, which are both major collector roadways. There is, it's located near and there is visibility from Interstate 25. When the subdivision was originally, or laid out in its current configuration, the local streets and the, the size of the lots, the dimensions of the lots were laid out for a small business park. The, as I mentioned in the staff report, the area along Sixth Street has, has purposefully been designed and allowed uses that support travelers on I-25 and that automobile oriented traffic. The layout of the subdivision was not originally anticipated for that type of traffic volume. And subsequent, or subsequent to tonight's hearing, that C1 zoning has, on other properties obtained conditional use approvals for the single family attached townhomes. So there is a high level of residential in this vicinity. As Mr. Hawkins pointed out, there is an existing home immediately north of Svetta. It was according to county records built in 1916. So it's been there for a while. And I pointed out in my presentation, existing development to the west of this site being the, the pharmacy, the chiropractic office and the residential lofts above. And of course, we'd be remiss if we didn't point out the Ridley's Family Grocery Store just south of Jefferson at this location, along with the, the other uses there that support local, local residents for their service needs. The second finding is, and you'll find in the staff report, it's just a table. It's the, the zoning of, of the property and surrounding properties. And we covered that when I kind of oriented you with the, the location and zoning map. So I don't feel the need to go over that unless there's any questions on the existing zoning. The, the third finding is the suitability of the subject property for the uses to which it has been restricted. So that's the, it's really asking what, what is currently allowed under the C1 zoning for the property? And is that the right fit for, for the subdivision and the property itself? As we point out in the staff report, it's been zoned C1. There are a number of, of uses allowed in the C1, including small commercial and residential. We have seen a difference in the pattern of development from the town's perspective to allow the automobile oriented uses, fast food, drive-throughs, lodging, higher intensity type of automobile or highway traffic supporting uses along Sixth Street, which is nearby. And the requested C3 zoning would allow fuel sales, fast food, drive-throughs, the other, other uses that are a little bit higher, commercial nature, higher traffic use that in staff's opinion was not compatible with the residential uses in, in close proximity. I did, I want to point out too, I did provide a, a printout to the planning commissioners just with the existing C1 uses and the existing C3 uses. So you have that in front of you if you'd like to make that comparison. The fourth finding is the extent to which removal of the restrictions will detrimentally affect nearby property. Again, as I, I stated, it's staff's opinion that, that the nature and character of this existing subdivision is, is different in nature than Sixth Street, which was designed and intended for that higher level commercial users. So, and the pattern of land use from the town's approval processes allowing attached townhomes in this subdivision indicates a, a pattern that it has become slightly more residential, but still allowing some, some compatible business uses to locate there being the, I'll probably jump into the number five, but the, the chiropractic office and that, and the pharmacy commercial project was recently. I'll probably jump into the number five, but the, the chiropractic office and that, and the pharmacy commercial project was recently approved in two thousand nineteen. We also point out the, the lot sizes again and the consideration for the, the pharmacy. They did request a drive-through. At the time, the request was being made for that conditional use to allow the drive-through. There was not a tenant identified. And this planning commission specifically made a recommendation and the board of trustees supported it. To limit the, the number of users for that drive-through with the caveat that the, the residential. Lofts up above and the residential in the vicinity was a key factor in, in putting those conditions on that conditional approval. A number of the commissioners were here for that, so I don't want to overstate it, but I, I think. You might recall that, that particular case as well from two thousand nineteen. So the fifth finding is the length of time the subject property has remained vacant as zoned. Again, we try to kind of approach this from a factual basis. Are there, are there factors involved that are related to zoning that has prevented the property from being developed? Or are there other factors as well? One of the common findings that I look at for this is are there, are there a glut of the similar zoning properties nearby? Or in town that maybe the other properties are just more desirable and developed faster than the property? And in this case, I didn't find that. There's, there's a limited number of C one zone commercial properties. These are. Few of the only undeveloped C one properties in town. So there's not a glut of C one property where. Developments going to the low hanging fruit properties, if you will. And to the contrary, the. There's been recent development on the adjacent property of the West for commercial purposes with residential mixed use. So it demonstrates that there is a viability for that C one zoning. And again, we do have other C one zone properties in town with, with viable uses on them. More likely, there's, there's. Site factors that weigh into the length of the time this property has remained vacant. Believe Mr., I believe it was Mr. Hawkins had alluded to this as well, that there was. Some known street improvements and drainage and some other things that needed to, utilities that needed to be addressed as part of development of the site. And it would be staff's opinion that that, those factors are probably more indicative of the reason the property has been vacant because of the challenges with developing. The sixth finding is the gain to the public health, safety and welfare. By the possible dimin, compared to the possible diminution in value of the, the property. And any hardship imposed upon the applicant. So in this case, this one's a tricky one, but in staff's opinion. The C one zoning is, is still appropriate for the site based on the contextual surroundings. There are viable developments in C one that have been successful. The C three would allow additional uses that are, in staff's opinion, not very compatible. With the type and scale of development that has been allowed in this particular subdivision. And so the diminuation in value, there, there is still commercial value in that C one. So the, the number of additional uses allowed by C three. Staff doesn't feel is a, is a huge factor in terms of the, the property itself. Obviously, the type of development that could go in and either the C one or the C three would be a bigger factor in the property value. So that, that one's a tricky one and I'm happy to answer any, any questions if you come along those on, on that particular finding. The seventh finding is the impact of the proposed development on community facilities. Staff really finds this one to be pretty neutral. There's existing public utilities adjacent to the site that can easily be extended. For water and sewer. We do note that there's, there's known improvements needed for. For roadways, pedestrian connections, sidewalks. And those, those are factors that would be addressed as a part of any development approval for site plan review. So in terms of the community facilities, we have adequate facilities in order to serve. The site for, for uses in either C one or C three. The next finding, number eight, is the opposition or supportive neighborhood residents. And again, as we, as we put in the staff report, and as of today, staff has not received any phone calls or any written communications. Concerning this rezon request, so that's still pretty neutral. We do always point out that you have a public hearing coming up, and so you'll need to hear any testimony presented in the public hearing. The ninth finding, excuse me, is the conformance of the requested zone change to the town's comprehensive plan. This planning commission is probably pretty familiar with the comprehensive plan and its process. It was just updated and that update was adopted in August of two thousand twenty one. At the time that comprehensive plan process went through and was adopted. The future land use map had identified this subdivision as downtown. And at the time, the downtown neighbor, at the time of the comprehensive plan, the downtown neighborhoods was. Viewed as being an, an opportunity to allow integrated mixed uses, allow. Business uses that were compatible and appropriate with residential development. And through the course of the land use code update that was just approved in, on March twenty second, not very long ago. The land use code requirements and limitations. Kind of shifted that perspective a little bit. And so I think the, the finding from staff's perspective is that the comprehensive plan. Identifying this area as neighbor, or as downtown neighborhoods is probably not the right fit for. For this property, just based on the way the land use code discussion went, it would probably be more appropriate. As a commercial category or mixed use for this particular property. And then the, the last finding is the recommendation of professional planning staff. So this report was prepared by me. You've seen my findings. I've explained them at a high level and my more detailed bullet points are in the report. It's been open to the public. Based on, on all the preceding findings and my explanation here tonight. Staff found that the C one community commercial is probably an appropriate zoning district. For, for this particular piece of property in that subdivision. And in particular, the findings one, four and five were really what staff was looking at as the strongest factors. One being the, the existing character and the factual description of the property and the surrounding environs. Four was the, the finding of removing the current restrictions, the impacts on the, on the environment and the surrounding neighbors. And five is that there's existing C one properties with viable commercial developments on them already. And that, including the one just to the west of this demonstrates that there is still demand for C one zoning. So that's, those were the, the ten findings and staff's opinion of those. So I'm, I'm open to answering any questions on those at a, a high level or clarifying any of my staff comments. But again, I'd encourage you to not get into deliberations because you still have a public hearing.
Cody, just real quick question, where are those findings adopted into the municipal code?
In the, yeah, the, the current code that was adopted in March has a set of findings in them.
No, I'm talking about for this application that we're not subject to the new code. I'm talking about the. The findings you just went through, how are those adopted into the municipal code?
Yeah, so they're not in, they're not listed in the municipal code. These are the set of findings that the town has used since I've been here. And I can't speak to before that, but this has been the standard of review for, for cases for the last four years.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I guess before we get into the public hearing, anybody on the planning commission have any follow-up questions for Cody? And then we'll go ahead and open it up to public.
So, looking at this intersection, you have Jefferson and Sixth, I mean. And, and looking at the size of the parcel. I don't know, I mean, what are the setbacks if you were, I think there was a suggestion that access would be off a sixth and I don't. Know that the setbacks from intersection to intersection, if, if that's reasonable, is that going to cause some sort of, I don't know what that is. It just doesn't seem, it seems like it's pretty jammed up tight. I know there's, there's requirements for separations between access points.
Yeah, thanks, Commissioner Whitehouse. There, there was a, you know, obviously a factor that staff was considering and, you know, being residents, everyone here has driven that stretch and know the challenges with the. Sixth Street at this particular location comes down to a narrow two lane with no shoulders, no turn lanes. And then it opens up again into a frontage road. It's definitely an area that's transitioning. But the, the geometries of, of intersections and turn lanes at Svetta and Jefferson are already a little bit of a challenge. Adding another, another access point with, with, you know, commercial vehicle traffic. From the highway would, would definitely be a factor that needs to be looked at very closely as part of a site plan review. There, there could be some possibilities to allow those accesses there, but again, at first blush and from a zoning perspective. That seems like it'd be unlikely. We need to have the, as the applicant had, had suggested, there need to be a traffic impact study. And the town engineering staff would have to take a very close look at that, but just on its face, the town's standards for a thirty five mile per hour. Design roadway, the, the right turn lane is two hundred and forty to two hundred and fifty feet. And length, your left turn lanes are two hundred and thirty feet in length, and that's from the back of the queue. So you have to account for some vehicles stacked up waiting to turn in addition to your turn lane in the taper. So there's. And this is approximately four hundred feet between Svetta and Jefferson. So just that consideration suggests that there's. Not a good opportunity to fit all the required safety improvements in the road to, to accommodate another drive entrance there. Same is true for prolonged Jefferson. You've got compounding turn lane conflicts. That would make it extremely difficult, if not impossible, to, to get additional access point off of Jefferson.
Then, anyone else have a question? Okay. Yeah, then I guess the other question is, what is, I know the box holder drainage goes through that parcel just. Is it the box holder or Coal Creek?
It's Coal Creek.
Is there any floodplain issues on this particular parcel? My recollection seems to be a little higher than the parcel, the residential parcel to the north.
Yeah, so the, the current floodplain boundary does impact portions of this property. As well as the property to the north and this intersection in general. It's really kind of resulting from a constriction here at this. Sixth Street before it gets into the wide open channel adjacent to the Ridley's Family Grocery Store. So there are some existing floodplain impacts to the property that would have to be mitigated for development.
Thank you very much.
Cody, you have a question? If you could help me refresh my memory, when we were looking at that property. By the animal clinic that was right in front of the. It was in the floodplain there. And that we, that was deemed C one, is that correct? At that point, it was, that's just a small piece there.
It, it is, and I was, I'm referring to the, the map, but the cursor is pretty hard to, to see. If you can kind of see the, the little crosshairs there. The property that Commissioner Knack was referring to is, is this property. The Wellington Vet Clinic is located here on the north end. And most of the south half of this is impacted by Coal Creek. There was a, a minor subdivision, it was basically just a lot split where the applicant had come back and asked to. Separate a P, the, just a second buildable lot. South of the, of the vet clinic, but north of the floodplain, and they were able to demonstrate that they had adequate space to construct a. Commercial facility with adequate parking and circulation and not impact the floodplain there. So that request was approved and it maintained the existing C one zoning.
So it looks like basically we have all C two or C one. Really along that Sixth Street until we get to Jefferson. And then that changes the whole dynamics of the interstate. Because it's kind of sandwiched in there.
Think if, if I, if I, yeah, well, I'm going to take a stab at paraphrasing. It sounds like what you're saying is that the existing. Subdivision has had a consistent zoning with, with those properties there, and there's a clear differential. Along Sixth Street, the, the east side has been zoned C three highway commercial and the west side has been retained as C one.
Right, it seems very consistent that it's been C one on the west side. Of Sixth Street up until Jefferson where that just kind of expands out into open land.
I, I agree with you that south of Jefferson, it's, it does transition to C three zoning that was once open land and, and now we do have. A number of commercial uses there. If there's any other clarifying questions, I'm happy to answer those. But if, if not, or if you have deliberations, I would suggest maybe moving on to the public hearing portion.
Yep, I agree. We will go ahead and open the public forum section here now. If any of the public wishes to speak on this, just go ahead and approach the podium, state your name and address. Time is limited to three minutes. We will be keeping track. Kathy.
Okay. I, my. Couple days ago, my husband and I actually stopped to see what the, what the little public sign was. Oh, my name's Kathy by Dallas, thirty four oh five Revere Court. Wellington. Yeah, it threw me off because the pen's not working. But anyhow. So, so. We passed by that little sign, this tiny little print. And I don't find it at all surprising that there's been no public comment at all, negative or positive. Because nobody knows what's going on. Somebody had asked me, and that's one of the reasons I stopped. They thought it had something to do with. The vet clinic, which is on the other side of that old farmhouse. So I'm like, I don't think so, must be something else. So anyhow. My main problem with it is, is the traffic. It's already a pain in the neck. If you're on Jefferson and you want to turn left and go north on Sixth Street, there's that big metal box there. So you're inching out into traffic to, to see around it to start with. I just can't imagine another driveway coming off and people going in and out. And then there's the, the Ridley's. Supposedly just an exit, but it's also used as an entrance often at the same, right there at the stop sign. So that's a, a really big problem. And what, one of the things that it'll do, kind of an unintended consequence, is people will go, forget this. I'm going to go through the new neighborhood at Harvest Village and then I'm going to go up Third Street or Fourth Street. So those residential streets are going to get really impacted by people not wanting to deal with the mess. On Jefferson and, and Sixth. If, if we would get something like. If it's C three and you put a McDonald's there, you know, there's times when the, the traffic there is outrageous. People can't. Turn right or left half the time, you know, lunchtime. So I, I just think that would be a really big problem. Also, Third and Fourth Street, when I was on the Parks Board. Were looked at as possible bike routes. You know, not necessarily put a bike lane in, but to advertise it as this is a safe street for you to ride your bike on. So I, I think it would just add traffic to them and I, I appreciate the. Because of. It's, it's not really advertised. I mean, the sign is about this big and there's big print that says public hearing and then everything else is really tiny. And then it says rezone and what does that mean? People don't really care. So I think that's. You know, people don't know. That's why there hasn't been any comment. And so I appreciate the town administration and the planning staff for sticking up for the residents. Since we obviously were kind of out of the loop. So, thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Melissa Whitehouse, thirty nine twenty two Grant Avenue. I think it's pretty clear that if you look at the. Sorry, I had it a second ago. If you look at the overhead view, it is the satellite view of that particular intersection. It's very obvious to me anyway, and I'm referring to page fifteen of the packet. It's pretty obvious looking at Fifth Street, North of Jefferson and Svetta Lane. Just the, the width of those two streets in general. That is not the width of a C three zone. The both of those streets together. Now, it has been suggested that a de-acceleration lane be added to Sixth Street. That's not going to solve the problem, just as you just mentioned, that there will not be access off of Jefferson or Sixth. It will be Svet. That's not going to solve the problem, just as you just mentioned, that there will not be access off of Jefferson or Sixth. It will be Svetta or Fifth. So that's pretty clearly stated in terms of just the width of loan, alone of those two streets. And once again, I actually did make a comment during that earlier development to those parcels to the west. And I was glad that everybody recognized that if there is a drive-through, you don't want headlights directed at those two residential locations or any residential north or west, which is exactly why C one does fit and C three does not. One thing that I was surprised to note was that semis and tractor trailers are definitely a C three consideration. They are not C two or C one considered, well, C one consideration, not C two, because that is downtown corridor. But yes, because I do live in the downtown neighborhood and yes, I do recognize that Jefferson and Sixth are the boundaries for that downtown neighborhood. And that C three probably should not be considered, not even in that corner, because there is residential to that corner. And as Commissioner Knack clearly stated, looking at that zone, you've already got a very clear delineation of C one through that entire corner. And that is to the west of six. And I absolutely agree with that. And that's all I had to say on the statement. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa.
Hi, I'm Karen Eifert. I live in the Knowles. I, I had a weird question, I guess. The two men who spoke via the Zoom link, are they the petitioners or are they somebody representing the petitioner?
I can answer that question if that's all right. The, the two gentlemen who spoke on the Zoom call are agents for the applicant.
For the applicant, sorry. I said it wrong. So, I, I guess something I just want to say is that they commented that the property north of the C one zone may at some point be forced out, but I don't think that has anything to do with trying to get C one converted to C three. But also, I'm really concerned about the traffic in that area. There is so much residential there. And as stated before, on Six, that is a really narrow area. And already there's been several times where I've come out, as Kathy was saying, come out on Jefferson and I'm turning left there to go north on Sixth. And there is that big, I don't know what box it is, but it's a big green box. And that's hard to see around. And I'm really worried that it's going to increase a lot of accidents and a lot of safety issues with our townspeople driving in that area and not being able to have that visibility going north on Sixth. And I really think that C three, as Mrs. Whitehouse pointed out, I used to be a truck driver and there is a lot of not only the lights, but the sound of the Jake bricks, the sound of the loading docks, the people doing off and on loading for commercial businesses. It's going to raise the noise, the noise volume at different times of the day, during the night. There's all times of day that things are delivered. Headlights are a problem too. And then if they are made to wait overnight to be unloaded the next morning, then that truck, that semi truck is going to be idling overnight. And that means all throughout the night, off and on the entire night, their engines are going to start and their engines are just going to stop. And I think that's really going to be a negative impact on residential. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Eifert. Whoever would like to go.
It'd be trouble. I can barely introduce myself in three minutes, man. So. My name is Tom Donnelly and I am a professional land surveyor as well as a consultant. And I'm here on behalf of the property owner and the contract buyer for the property at seventy-eight forty-sixth Street. Before I served on the Board of County Commissioners, I, actually, my first foray into public service was as a planning commission member in the City of Love in my hometown. And so my condolences to all of you. No, seriously, I, I do appreciate the, the difficult job you, you frequently have and, and the hard work you have to put in for not very good pay, by the way. And figuring out how to split that baby is, is always a challenge. I think you've heard quite a bit of public comment tonight, on behalf of why this zoning, rezoning application is inappropriate. Based on the comments heard from the, from the, the citizens here in town. The, the testimony from your professional planning staff, which indicated that, that he found a challenge to, to meet your findings of number one, four and five. I don't know if it was, if it was simply that Mr. Hawkins forgot, but one use that's actually permitted in the C three zone district since November is marijuana dispensaries. And so they, they happen to not mention that use. And I wanted to bring to the attention that the contract purchaser listed in your packet, Mr. Diet, actually owns a number of marijuana dispensaries throughout the state of Colorado. Now, it might be speculation on my part as to what he plans to do with this property. Maybe he doesn't intend to build a dispensary. But here's the thing, if this zoning is allowed to change to C three, then it doesn't matter if he wants to do it or if someone else wants to do it. And in fact, the town board has zero authority to regulate marijuana dispensaries. The citizens of your community said that. They said that as much as that. The town board can't even change the regulations as they were approved by the voters in a very narrow election, right? One vote. I know a thing or two about narrow elections and that was even closer to my, my standards. And so I think what you have here is a proposal which potentially circumvents the will of the people of this community. You know, the, the voters, the citizens, all of you, me, we, the people. This is a, this is essentially, potentially an end around to change the rules on where marijuana dispensary can be located. Even though the, the citizens are clear that the town board themselves cannot even do that. This is the kind of thing that would allow that to happen on this property. I, I think that you need to be very careful when, in, in your deliberation. And, and my hope is, on behalf of my clients, that you will send a message to the town board recommending that they deny this rezoning request. Thanks a lot for your time and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bonley.
Sure. Good luck.
Thank you again.
God bless America.
Ralph Hottashell, seven, seven, three, five, Sixth Street, Wellington. My concern is where is the flood overflow floodwater going to go? Presently, this particular area has been the catch-all for the overflow flood, floodwaters of Coal Creek. Presently, the Coal Creek runs under Sixth Street. Goes to the east side of Sixth Street and then across the interstate. It does not connect any, in any way to the big flood channel. I understand that the Pooter Ditch is a big problem there, there. And I assume that dirt will come in and fill in all this ground up to and above flood level to include the natural ditch where the water used to flow. I agree with the access of, off of Sixth Street. It's just too, there's too much traffic there now. Basically, my concern is where is the floodware overflow floodwater going to go? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, it looks like that's the end of our public hearing section. So we'll close the public hearing portion. At this point, I think we've gathered, I mean, we've gathered information from the applicant. We've gathered the information from staff. We've heard the public comments. We'll go ahead and discuss it as a board, I guess. Does anybody have any, any discussion topics to start it off?
I have something real quick, but go ahead.
I was just going to, I, I don't want to impede on the, on the planning commission's deliberations here. Typically in a public hearing procedure, we do allow the applicant to respond to any comments that they heard. And staff would do the same for kind of closing comments before any deliberations.
Gotcha, yep.
So if that, if you're okay with that, I would suggest.
Well, since it's on your list and I just skipped it. So yeah, why don't we do that? Makes more sense. Yes. Thank you for interrupting me.
He's got two lists in front of him. Give him a break.
He has like seven lists in front of him. They're confusing.
But I, I would suggest that, that under our normal procedures, the applicant has the, the opportunity to, to respond first. So Mr. Hawkins and Mr. McGarvey, if you would have any response, that would be your time.
We have no response. I'm good at reading tea leaves. Thank you.
Okay. So did, did everyone hear that? Cause I, I had a hard time, but it sounds like everyone else got the comment.
They had no issues.
Okay. There were just a, a couple of things that I wanted to, to comment on. We, we have heard some similar comments on regarding the, the intersection, the transformer and the visibility there. I think everyone here is very well aware of that. I want to make it really clear that that's a, a utility infrastructure type of thing that should be, but could be addressed as part of a development of the property to, to reduce the site visibility, the triangle. To Mr. Hottashell's comments as well. And, and we have heard the same comment about drainage and floodplain. I, I agree with his, his comment about the concern for where does the water go if, if that site is Phil is brought into, to bring it up to grade for development purposes. And I've said in the past, and I'd say it again, as, as part of any site plan and development plan process, the drainage will have to be addressed and mitigate existing floodplain and drainage concerns. I know that doesn't always feel real comfortable. But that is something that, that staff has a very strong opinion on as well, that that needs to be addressed for any development site. And then I think the other, the other comments were consistent with either the staff report or observations that have already been pointed out. So I just wanted to mainly speak to those two points. Thank you.
I would heard a little bit of discussion about a deceleration lane on Sixth, if you're going to turn right into Svetta Lane there. I can see that just looking at the map as the overview. That's gonna have to be right on Mr. Hottashell's property, which is going to make the drainage even worse. So I don't see any way you could possibly do that without causing drainage issues.
And if I could respond real quickly too, I, I think that there is definitely a constriction point there. I can tell you as part of any turn lane improvements for our roadway, we would want to take a look at drainage to address that question as part of that same project. Typically, when you construct a street, you'll make the stormwater improvements associated with it to make sure that you can pass the flow of water. I won't say it's easy, but it would be definitely a consideration that we'd have to take a look at.
Yeah, I think Bert just unofficially kicked us off to the deliberations section now. So he did, he did things in the right order. Anybody else? Any other discussion topics? Anything?
I have, I have a few things that came up in public comment that I did want to acknowledge too. And hopefully, Mr. Bird can help me with a couple of them. There was concern and I heard it and I would, I would also be worried if the sign was the only indication of a public hearing. So I did want everyone to rest assured that there are multiple methods in order to advertise for public hearings. And you may not have come across it, but I just wanted everyone to be aware of the process. And I was hoping Cody could then share it to us, because I don't remember all of it.
And I'd be happy to, Commissioner Kenny. So we have a, a three-part process for advertising public hearings. We post the, or in fact, the applicant posts the sign. We give them the template for what needs to be on it. We give them the content. And the applicant posts the sign on the property. We make sure that it's continuously displayed from the time it's posted until the time of the public hearing. We also publish the advertisement in the Fort Collins Coloradoan. That's the Towns Official Newspaper. And that advertisement for tonight's hearing and for the Board of Trustees hearing on April twenty-sixth has been advertised. And we also send letters to properties within three hundred feet of the property being considered for the public hearing. And staff took care of mailing the notices to property owners within three hundred feet of, of this, of this subject parcel.
Okay. Yeah. And I can see, considering it is a commercial property and, and they're generally larger. So if you were to see one at a park or a single family household, it's usually generally more visible. But I do want to make sure everybody knows there's multiple methods in which we are required to advertise for public hearing. So that was one of the items I wanted to get out. Another thing that I wanted, I'm really looking forward to the day that this property is developed. I mean, a lot of the concerns as to why we shouldn't consider C three are actual reasons why I want this property to be developed. The concerns of the visibility that, that intersection, Jefferson and Sixth Street, that is a nightmare. I, I hold my breath every time I drive through there. And I expect someone to dart out in front of me. And I've done it to people before. And when I did that, I was like, are you kidding me? Like, that's the one intersection I'm always worried about. So development of a property will likely and should include improved visibility of that corner, including relocating that infrastructure for utilities. That's got to happen whenever that property gets developed. We have to make that a requirement priority. Likely would have to happen regardless with, with the additional plans that would need to be approved. Road improvements along Six Three, right in front of that property, need to be improved. The development of this property would be an opportunity to make that happen. So with that said, I cannot wait for the day that this property is developed. I think that is going to be good for Wellington. One of the most dangerous intersections in town, as far as I'm concerned. With that said, and regardless of my encouragement of, of development of this property, I've heard a lot of things also that are very concerning regarding C three. When I think of C three, I automatically envision a gas station. Because highway commercial, so gas station is what I think of. So if you were to put a stamp of approval on C three, you are saying a gas station should go here or could go here. But in my mind, that's how I envision it because of the traffic patterns, accessibility, lighting issues, all kinds of things associated with C three. So with that said, maybe had this development gone a different way at some point, and there wasn't a significant residential presence in this neighborhood. Maybe it would have been appropriate to switch to C three. But given that three adjacent neighbors, including entire neighborhood, is residential uses of this property. And again, not as a, a given right, but as a conditional use, but is verified and is currently being used as in that use. I don't know if it's appropriate to have, in my mind, as I imagine C three, a gas station nestled within three residential neighborhoods or mixed use in the case that it would be the second floor of the chiropractic office, for example. The traffic concerns are obviously an issue, but with what I said earlier is the development of this property, property will spur improvements regarding the roads. Enough? I don't know. And it sounds like there is significant concerns if even that could be accommodated. And a traffic study would be required. So the other things I mentioned, those are my major points, but there's a couple of things I did want to acknowledge from public comment as well. And as much as I agree that it was likely intentional that the uses for C3 were limited to certain list of uses. In my mind, that doesn't necessarily drive any of my decisions or factors. And I do want to make it very clear that requesting zoning changes in the process in which this applicant has done this process has always been the process within our town. So there's no strings being pulled, there's no process that suddenly is available now that wasn't before. And within the requirements of, you know, the vote, the vote and everything that occurred, a zoning change is something that's permitted to be requested. So there's, I, I wouldn't say that that is a switch and change kind of situation, but it is something that's always been possible within the town. So obviously, I understand there's likely motivations, but I do want to state that that is the case, that zoning changes are always allowed to be requested. And then I also want to make sure that it's known that any existing land uses right now, there's no steps or intention to remove those uses. So if there is a residence in the property north of the property being indicated, one might gather some, someday in the future. It'll likely be a very well visible property that could be wonderful for commercial use. But nowhere in this process or, and anything that's going on right now. Is removing that use. I heard a couple of statements saying that they would be, that might be the case, and that's not the case. So there's no uses being removed from surrounding properties associated with this request. So that's what I want to say for the farmhouse north. Of this property. Thank you.
Yeah, I have a few comments that I want to just share with a little bit, and I think I already kind of shared a little bit about my consistency. We've had a lot of history in our town of kind of having developments and really not having that consistency of where things are going and the zoning. So I am very proud about how we're coming along with our comprehensive, or we came along with our comprehensive plan and our land use code. We are really in the forefront of looking at that map, the zoning map. So with that, and, and kind of in conjunction of, is it Mr. Donnelly, Bonnely? Okay, of what you had, had mentioned about limited areas. I mean, I'm looking that with our new zoning map, there's potential of more C3s coming in, and I will say that we need more C3s in this town. We, we have different avenues for that. So I'm thinking that that's really where we're looking in our future map, zoning maps. And I would encourage that people share with us, you know, too, when we're doing the mapping, where that would go. But where we're at right now is just really trying to be consistent. And like Commissioner Kenny said, that the process is the same for the rezoning and it has been the same. I know that there's a lot of excitement and also there's a lot of fear for the marijuana usage in town. And that it has been, you know, set to be a C3. So I don't know where that's going to land either, but I do think that there's going to be new zoning and public input on it. One of the public comments, and I just wanted to share just my feeling on this, is that there was fear of semi trucks and noise and turning into places. Well, we have semi trucks coming into all commercial areas. And actually, our neighborhoods too, if they're delivering, a house is being moved in. Or a restaurant has their delivery of their food and supplies, that sometimes does come at midnight too. So I understand that concern, but I also don't want to limit that to being just that, okay, we're afraid of semis. It's already hard to get around with trucks in town, and that was for a purpose. So just saying, I know I don't want the Jake breaks coming through, absolutely not, especially at, you know, two in the morning. But I think the reality is that our commercial districts are going to have some of that, especially our restaurants and stores, so. And then Mr. Howdershell, I do believe that there's a huge concern for us in the flooding. You've had years of issues dealing with the flooding and things like that going through your property. So I do feel good that those issues do have to be addressed, whether it's a C2, C3, or even if when, you know, in the future, what it goes to. So that does have to be addressed, so thanks.
Anything else from the planning commission? Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Howdershell. Could you come back up to the mic, please?
Ralph Howdershell, 773563, I'd like to make one quick comment about Jefferson Street, getting onto Sixth Street. It's real confusing at night when you have the traffic on the interstate, traffic on Sixth Street. It's hard to determine which is which, and you have to be real careful. Thank you.
Thank you, yes. I think everybody here agrees with you. All right, guys, I think we've kind of talked through this enough. I'd be honest, I was a little surprised there wasn't more rebuttal from the pro side, but seeing that there is none, I don't, if there's no other comments. Are we ready to, ready to make a motion on it? Unless, Mr. Bird, you look hesitant, you've got anything else to say?
No, I just, my, my look was, I was making some notes and trying to make sure that I can reflect clearly what the planning commission's findings that you're basing your recommendation on. So we can forward that to the Board of Trustees. So perhaps as you're thinking through kind of final deliberations, if you can help me in communicating clearly to the Board of Trustees what the basis for the findings is.
My major bullet points are the, the safety of access to the lot, that would be based on the higher traffic for C3. It's not sufficient and would not be safe. And the other piece is the adjacent, all the adjacent residential does not make it appropriate for C3.
I think number four was the sticking point for me. I went right to Chick-fil-A. If we rezone the C3, Chick-fil-A could come in and put a Chick-fil-A on that corner. Enough said. Sorry, that was definitely not the point of that comment, but you all understand what I mean. I mean, I, I think. I think I'd echo some of both Commissioner Kenny's comments, and I mean, I think the traffic issues are there. I think the adjacency issues with the residential and having appropriate buffering. I don't know that that makes a lot of sense to me. And again, then you have obviously, again, access onto Jefferson or Sixth, I just don't see how that works. And I do believe those existing streets there, Fifth and Svetta are not appropriate for increased traffic counts.
Thank you. I appreciate the clarity on, on our, on our notes, so we can forward that to the Board of Trustees.
You want a motion?
Yeah, I think we're ready for a motion on this. Anybody want to give it a whirl?
I move to forward a recommendation to the Board of Trustees to retain the C1 Community Commercial District, with described property based on findings of the fact.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Fredericks?
Yes.
McCaffrey?
Yes.
Canack?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Whitehouse?
Yes.
Sardar?
Yes.
Okay, I believe motion passes.
And just for, for clarification, for those who are listening in, the, the recommendation from the planning commission was to retain the existing C1 zoning. And that recommendation, along with the basis for the findings, will be forwarded to the Board of Trustees. The Board of Trustees is scheduled to hear this in a public hearing on April 26th, here at the Leaper Center at 6:30 PM.
Okay, thank you for the clarification, Mr. Bird. All right, next agenda item, 6B, it's a site plan review for light industrial development and boxholder business park. Mr. Bird, I'll give it back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Going to scroll here for a minute to get to the next agenda items' location map, so I can. Orient you in the same way for this next application. Takes a lot of clicks to get here. There we go. Okay, so. As was introduced, this next application is a site plan review for a property on Piper Road. Just to be, do we need to take a minute or we'll close the door?
Talking.
Yeah, I'll give us just a minute before I go on. Okay, I'll continue. Thank you for closing the doors there, Commissioner Whitehouse. So again, this is Cody Bird, Planning Director. The next application is a site plan review for a property in the Light Industrial District, Boxholder Business Park. The, the property is .85 acres west of Piper Road. Piper Road is a private road or private street accessed via West First Street, also a private street. And this is north of Washington Avenue. So in the location map here is being displayed on the screen, it's in your packet, there's Washington Avenue, so you can see the access there. This is a, a site plan review, there's a one-step process, the planning commission makes the final decision on a site plan. So it doesn't go on to the Board of Trustees, it's also not a public hearing, the planning commission can accept public comments, but we don't have a public hearing in the same quasi judicial capacity that we did for the last rezone case. So this one is not quite the same procedure. But what we will do is staff will give a brief introduction to the application, will still give the applicant an opportunity to present information. I believe they may have some additional slides they want to share as well for, for this evening. And then following presentations from staff and the applicant, you can ask questions. You can allow public comment if there is any, and then you can move on to your deliberations. So from staff's perspective, I wanted to share just a little bit of background information on this particular request too. The property owner, Joshua Griffin, reached out to staff. And, and he's been communicating with staff for a while about the desire to do a, a project for a new building over here in the Light Industrial Park. It was staff's understanding what, basically what he's run into is the same frustration that a lot of our builders are experiencing right now with supply chain. And getting, getting materials ordered, getting things delivered in a, in a manner that they can predict construction timelines. I'm here to tell you, on the building side of things in my department, the struggle is very real in terms of getting things here and being able to make important financial decisions on a project moving forward without a site approval. To even desire to, to order, you know, a metal building. And so kind of understanding those, those challenges with the current marketplace and, and unavailability of, of supplies. My suggestion to Joshua was to go ahead and submit the site plan review. You know, staff understands, and I think the planning commission could understand in this, in these unique circumstances that we're in. That a light industrial development with a, a metal, you know, pre-engineered metal building is going to look an awful lot like most of the other pre-engineered metal buildings in that same light industrial park. So building elevations are not included in your, in your packet, any significant detail. Because they're, the owner of the property hasn't purchased those plans yet because it's hard to commit to that under the circumstances. But what they've prepared is a, the, the civil package, this, the site plan that shows the location of the building, the footprint of the building. The accesses, et cetera. The, the landscaping plan was a little bit bare bones. I also told the applicant that, that that's okay. We need to understand that what they're proposing is they will put in landscaping, focusing on the street trees in this particular subdivision. Knowing that our landscape standards in my time here have not been applied 100% as written for light industrial property because of the nature of the outdoor storage yards, parking, et cetera. Usually, the planning commission has approved a, a reduction to the landscaping requirements to meet the needs of the site. And so staff did suggest to the applicant that let's, let's proceed and, and bring as much as we can to the planning commission tonight. In the hopes that ordering a, a metal building and getting that in the queue for construction this year might still be a possibility. And having the, the owner feel comfortable making those significant financial commitments. By having a site approval. So that's the, a little bit wordy, but that was, that was the background that I wanted to share with why this, this application looks a little bit different than some of the applications you've seen in the past for commercial site plans. So then digging a little bit deeper into the staff report. What staff is suggesting is we, based just on the, the site layout and the, the square footage of the building, the parking lot. We understand that this is going to be a pretty typical light industrial type development. Staff is comfortable with, with recommending approval of the site from the planning commission's perspective. The zoning is appropriate, the structure is going to fit within the, the surrounding environs. Size setbacks, all the dimensional requirements would be satisfied from a planning and zoning standpoint. So we're, we're comfortable in recommending approval of the site. What we would ask for is some, some latitude for staff to continue to work with the applicant. There are some, some drainage comments from our engineering staff that need to be addressed. Primarily, this is private drainage, as I mentioned, Piper Road and West First Street, these are private streets approved a number of years ago. The, so those lines are, are private, the stormwater is private. We encourage the, the owner to work with the other property owners and the owners association to address any of the drainage concerns for the subdivision. The. The sewer lines also private, it's a two-inch force main, so they'll need to coordinate with the, the owners association for capacity and design and how to connect to the sewer there. So there's, there's a few things that the, the owner's going to have to kind of figure out still from a private side. The street's private, so the pavement is privately maintained, they're going to have to work with the owners association to figure out how to make the driveway connection, the details for that and, and the maintenance responsibilities. So there's some things for the, for the owners to, to figure out and coordinate on still. But we do suggest that the planning commission are allowing staff to work through some of those details with, on an administrative type basis. I also, before I get too far along, I wanted to make a couple of, a comment on the, the building itself in terms of the fire department's review. Your staff report correctly identifies that the fire department has a separate building permit process that will have to be followed. I did speak with Captain Pettit with Wellington Fire Protection District. And he also pointed out that there's a couple of details not in the site plans that they will need to look at as part of their review. And in particular, that, I mean, they made a comment that the building will need to be sprinkled, which is a requirement of the fire code, and that's true in this case. But they also commented that they need to understand where the, the FTC, the fire department connection, that's the nozzle you see on the side of the building where they connect their hoses to it. They need to understand where that's going to be located, make sure that meets all of their emergency requirements. They also made the comment that the, it's not clear what the. When they respond. Wider circulation aisles and wider turning radiuses to get that bigger equipment in there and still have room for other vehicles to pass. And so that's an if, and we don't know the answer to this yet unless the applicant can, can speak to it tonight. But if the building was over 30 feet in height, it could have some site impacts that need to be addressed from a fire district standpoint. So we want to throw that out there, that that's a possibility that will need to be evaluated when we have that information. But other than that, there's a few comments in the staff report, but overall, we do encourage the planning commission to consider allowing this project to move forward and working. encourage the Planning Commission to consider allowing this project to move forward and working with our engineering staff, plant staff and fire district. Joshua, did you want to say anything else from an application presentation standpoint? Or Morgan, if you're and Morgan, did you have slides you wanted to share? Patty, could you promote her to panelist if you haven't yet?
Okay. Give it a try. See if you see your laptop, because there's a light glare.
I'm Morgan Clapp with Baseline Engineering, and then Joshua's going to go over.
Joshua Griffin. Dynamic image. So I did just a basic elevation of what we're working with with General Steel. So we can do a lot of different things with it, but it's a 16-foot roof, but it's not more as height-wise with the fire department shouldn't have any issue. At one point in time, we were really hoping another business that would take almost half or a little bit so will the building out for future tenants. But the the most so the importance for and now on First Street. So that's why we had some discussions to business out of Wellington, I love being here and we run the ministry here as well. So so that's really my concern is that we even through make some things we went through, our businesses double. That's that's my big concern. The town is but it is own work with that, that's going to help us a lot. So that's really my main comment tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you both. Mr. Bird, did you have any other comments? Post presentation?
Yeah, I'm not sure. I got booted out and then was brought back in, so I hopefully that cleared up the
you know, with with enough water and use of use of water. So some ideas too that that we can is in different you know, we can talk about the the amount of trees, but actually in an industrial area. Let's take care of some of that, but I've I've put that in our our simple landscape plan, so.
Thanks, Joshua. And and that was actually a good lead in, I was, because I was going to comment on the landscaping that the pretty as low patients is and so for the reasons stated, Joshua said it pretty pretty eloquently, but I'd throw out there too, you know, I mentioned it in my introduction, but industrial parks don't need to have the same level of landscaping as some of our high visibility commercial cord. And so it's a goal for for this waivers or reductions on, I shouldn't say we've reduced it a number of times, we've never waived or the lately. And as as part of the in design manual, that was a supplement to the code that has a different level of landscaping standard for industrial properties. Because of the reasons available at this site, we would like to Griffin suggested to to find a low water use landscape appropriate for light industrial development. I also, I should have mentioned it in my earlier present. That submission doesn't have any existing sidewalks. Had there been sidewalks put in from the start, it would make sense to action to those case, so that would be something that or yeah. So so that was a little bit different that I wanted to at least call attention to, that's part of the suggestion was to waive this the sidewalk requirement in this case. Continue to work with them if we have a little bit of latitude on a couple of the requirements.
Thank you, Cody. I'll just check, is anybody want to make any public comment on the site plan? Okay, cool, didn't think so. Anyone on plan? Cody mentioned, this is Cloyd. The lack of building materials as well, I sympathize. His job presenting what you could given. So first as as the project, the site plan comes together, as you purchase materials, as it becomes a little clearer, I mean, I'm I'm fully confident Cody and town staff can handle.
And you're referring to consistency with the other light industrial project.
Yeah, I was just seeing the tree. That makes plenty of I mean, it's going to be a steel building, I think we've seen all those, I'm not, if it's going to physically fit. And you're saying, oh, the building will fit, and you have the proper circulation. I'm com- times, things aren't really, as people were building at a treatment plant, some things are not really available as you would like them to be, so. An opportunity to kind of move forward, because I think that would be a great thing, with a more certainty, that is, move forward a little more certainty.
If this were any other area other than Lee. With it, but given the the nature of the building and and you know, they can only differ so much at that point for steel buildings, I don't have a concern with it. It is interesting there. A manicured green lawn, pro sport. And then everybody else does, I think that's interesting, I was just curious, because that looks like they use a lot of water up there, so I maybe some can there's opportunities or lots to improve their water usage, so improve by conserving. But yeah, I I don't have any concern about moving forward, and also I don't agree that we need any sidewalks. Given the the rest of the surrounding area.
At least we know what the building's going to be, there's a number of spec buildings up there.
True. I did, I wanted to ask one one question, and we might need some the facade, as it was stated earlier, we know what a metal building's going to look like, or steel building will look like. The question I would wanted to pose was what about a Wayne's coat? A number of the buildings in this subdivision do have Wayne's coats, a number of them don't, some that do have a faux stone or or veneer, others are player of steel siding. Does the Planning Commission have a just, I simply, it has been a question that's come up in the past and or Joshua's building package.
Quick question, though, is there, is there, I can't remember right now, I'd have to look it up, but is there a certain amount of feet without any visual interest changes in the building that applies to light industrial, what's that, what does that sound like?
50 feet, 50 linear feet without some change in architectural variation.
Okay.
And I think that's another one that has not typically been a standard applied to many of our light industrial parks, I think it was applied to light industrial at the south end of town at the Wellington Business Center that has quite a bit more building architecture to it than just a steel building.
Right.
Visibility too.
The visibility is a pretty significant difference between the two light industrial subdivisions.
Yeah, I can address that, as a matter of fact, one of my partners in this project is Gene Vol but both of us talked about it, we want to do a Wayne's coating, they have different kinds, so General Steel has two-tone where you can do, you know, a light gray with the darker Wayne's coating and a darker I don't know if we want to do do that, I, just as a designer, I don't want it to just look like we just threw a building together. You know, it doesn't really represent what we do if we're a dynamic image, so. But yeah, I agree with that, I just think it looks nice, and I've looked around at most all the buildings there, a lot of them are my clients. And I do like the two-tone, I think that would be our best bet for doing the Wayne's coating.
Okay, so if if the Planning Commission agrees, what what I'm hearing is that the applicant's already considering some options. And staff would just, I'm just, I'm asking because the bill can sometimes be decisions. A two-tone color, as long as there is consistency within a subdivision in the architectural requirements for a steel building.
I think you said it, just consistency, as much, you know, obviously you want to be a unique structure amongst all the other buildings, but as consistent as you can be with what's already there.
Consistent, I I agree with you, consistency in that many of them do have Wayne's coatings, and I wouldn't want to require the applicant to put in a building without one if everyone else has one, so I think we've got it figured out, and I appreciate you providing the context.
Okay, anything else on the site plan? Do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve the site plans for Lot 7 Boxholder Business Park, subject to staff report comments and authorized staff to administratively review and approve building architecture, site lighting, signage, and final landscaping, and exclude or waive sidewalk requirements.
I'll second that. Oh.
Commissioner Fredericks?
Yes.
McCaffrey?
Yes.
Can I?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
White House?
Yes.
Starter?
Yes. Okay, thank you, Joshua Morgan, awesome. Any announcements?
I don't have any public hearings for May. I don't have any site plans for May. So I currently don't have any action items. The one item that staff is preparing for is at least an initial conversation on the zoning map. So that's would typically be a work session item. We can continue on that path. As long as you understand that we'd most likely be meeting for the purpose of having a work session with no action, and then we would adjourn. That's work for everyone. We'll meet at 6:30 at the regular time instead of early, like we have done for some of the work sessions.
Eric, still bring dinner?
No. Everyone can bring their own.
Ask, get a clear clarification on, obviously, the Board of Trustees moved to remove trustees from the Planning Commission, and obviously the applications need to be taken. Would you, do you have a sense of when that would occur?
I do not, but but Mr. Sapienza was reaching for the microphone, so I'll let him take the first cut.
This is the first time I've talked this evening, Dan Sapienza with March and all of the town attorneys. The election, of course, is happening tomorrow. The Planning Commission ordinance was passed to take effect April 19th, and the reason that date was chosen is that corresponds with the swearing-in of the new Board of Trustees. So on April 19th, at that moment, three members of this Planning Commission will no longer be members of this Planning Commission. And I believe it is on the Board of Trustees' agenda for April 26th, that first meeting to potentially appoint new members of this planning for the new Board of Trustees to appoint new members of this Planning Commission at that time. At a minimum, it will be discussed at that time, making sure that this commission has a full complement and is able to do the important work that it does is a very high priority for the Board of Trustees, so hopefully, April 26th, if not, we're in right there in
Does the board do that appointing directly then, without us interviewing them? We've always interviewed them before, that's why I'm curious.
I can, so in the past, the the I can, so in the past, the candidates did come to the planning commission After, you know, meeting with staff and we kind of talked through conflicts of interest and things of that nature. What the planning commission does and then the planning commission actually kind of interviewed them and made a recommendation to the mayor for that appointment. More recently, with changes in leadership, the decision was made to change that process To be more of a panel interview with a number of trustees, maybe the chair of the Border Commission for which the appointment's being made and staff liaisons. So that process seems to have been working for other appointments and it seems to be He's in the mayor making the Is making the appointment. So unless I hear otherwise, that's the path that we'll probably continue to use is this Panel interview style to help the mayor make their recommendation to the board of trustees.
I've participated in that a couple of times and I think it's, I think it's a good process with the rotating trustees to kind of do that. So I think it was a little more random in the past and I think of having a similar process for You know, filling these vacancies makes it a lot more Consistent. So would that interview process take place before the The trustee meeting? In which they may or may not be appointed or at least discussed.
That's the intent, yes.
So they got to be appointed in, so we have enough members in the following two weeks.
Exactly, and when this is brought to the board of trustees on April twenty-sixth, if the board of trustees doesn't believe it has enough information to Appoint members, it could be postponed, but the intent is to get it done By April twenty-sixth, because this, this planning commission and the board of adjustments both have changes coming That we need to make sure that they are fully Personed so that they can do the business of the town.
How many applications do you have?
I know we've had at least five or six and maybe a couple more, there's still some time for applicants to submit, so. And several of them are either candidates Or members of the board of adjustments, so there's a, I think there's a good pool of candidates to select from, for sure.
And if anybody wants to apply for any boarding commission, you can go to the Town of Wellington website. And in the menu, you select boards and commissions and there'll be a link there to apply for any open position, so please do that if you're interested. And even if you don't know a ton about it, but you want to help go in applying, you'll learn more through the application process.
Barry, you and I need to put our name into the application process, maybe they'll just kick us off.
I actually wanted to recommend that members of the planning commission consider applying for membership on the board of adjustment as well. One of the changes that was made was that the planning commission can overlap with the board of adjustment, but does not have to, so certainly I would recommend. If you're interested in taking on that additional role of the board of adjustment, which does not meet nearly as regularly as this one, apply for that. The question about a deadline is sooner, sooner than later.
All this discussion, I'm thinking maybe I ought to make an announcement. Next month's meeting will be my last meeting. I'm resigning from the commission.
Thank you for all your time.
So I just thought you ought to know that there's going to be another spot open.
Thanks, Barry.
At least eighteen, just at least eighteen on this board.
Probably two thousand four, two thousand five.
Did we both come in the same time? Or were you here before me? You were here before me the year, I think, yeah.
As I was telling Cody earlier. I was on planning commission in two thousand three and then Saber Middlekauf, who was here. She left because of personal problems and I took her spot on the trustees. And then after the trustees, then, and I was on housing authority at the time too, and then I didn't win election in April and I lost by five votes, something like that. And I tried again a couple of years later and I lost by one vote. And so I didn't try again and I've been on the planning and zoning ever since. And last year I resigned from the housing authority after fifteen years there. So My time is up.
Thank you very much, Barry.
Glad I could serve.
I have one quick question. Did you go to school at KU?
I did not. I was a Kansas State grad.
All right, he was getting her butt kicked right now.
I don't feel bad about it. When I get back and talk to my boss tomorrow.